He's talking to the city attorney, he's gonna release it in a moment. Here, just a second. Good evening and welcome to this, the November 25th meeting of Livermore City Council. I called the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Beriantos?
He'll be here shortly.
Okay. Councilmember Branning?
Here.
Councilmember Kick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carling?
Here.
Mayor Marshawn?
Here. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let the record show that Councilmember Beriantos has joined us. Questions for the city attorney? Was there any reportable action taken in the closed session?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jay Stancola. No, the council did not take any reportable action in closed session.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to items 3.1, the Proclamations and Presentations. I believe we have a presentation from the Beautification Committee. This would be by committee chair Karen Jefferson?
Hello. Honorable Mayor and City Council, I am Karen Jefferson, Chair of the Beautification Committee. Thank you for having the committee present an annual report on our 2024 activities. First, I would like to acknowledge the rest of the Beautification Committee. Tom Bradley, who is our Vice Chair, followed by committee members Anne Brown, Ron Kraft, John Stein, Andrew Wong, and Kat Weiss. We would also like to thank city staff liaisons Maurice Again, Joe Prime, Laurie Tobias, and Nancy Clays. The major accomplishments of the committee this year include presiding over Arbor Day 2025, 2024, not 2025, by providing 13 of the 15 public and private schools with prepared bags containing seed packets and other tree-related materials and distributed them to approximately 1,023 second graders. Two of those items, which I believe are in front of you, a bookmark and a Livermore Tree Treasure Map, were created specifically by the Ad-Hoc Committee. The bookmark has a link to a city webpage containing tree-related books found at the Livermore Public Library, as well as additional Arbor Day activities for children. Twelve schools, nine public and three private, selected and received a donated tree to plant on their school property. On the screen, you will see two of the happy school sites that received these trees. These trees were generously donated by Vice Chair Tom Bradley. We also created a daily social media challenge during Arbor Day week to inform citizens about Livermore trees. And a new tree was planted in the Springtown Open Space and dedicated to the current second graders. Now, going beyond our activities beyond Arbor Day, we created an ad hoc committee to discuss and promote tree replacement lists. Committee members volunteered at Sites for Community Service Day and provided design suggestions to city staff for the Carbon Garden, which was installed at City Hall in June. Committee member Wong also identified five litter hotspots that were added as volunteer sites. Committee member Wong presented ideas on how to prevent illegal dumping and improve community outreach about how to correctly dispose of bulky items. Committee member Wong, in my humble opinion, is a shining example of how we citizens can make a difference. He has single-handedly collected 500 gallons of trash in the city, making the city an even more beautiful place to live. Committee members have coordinated with the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association to discuss ways to update and restore the wine barrel at Portola Park. And finally, the beautification awards. The beautification award application brochure was revised to expand the reaching criteria of the award. Three 2024 beautification awards were awarded in recognition for properties that have significantly improved the visual appearance of the property and are aesthetically beneficial to the surrounding areas. The award recipients included two residential properties and one city-owned property. Thank you once again for supporting the beautification committee.
Thank you. I understand we also have, and 3.2, we have the presentation of the beautification awards.
Yes, we do.
Are there any questions for the beautification committee at this point? Okay, please.
Now, to present the 2024 beautification awards. The purpose of the awards are to improve curb appeal, recognize drought-tolerant landscape conditions, and promote creativity and community pride, and encourage citizen participation in beautifying Livermore. I also believe that the next slide shows the locations of each of our nominees and award winners. The first awardee is 144 Diamond Drive. The project began in 2023, replaced lawn with California natives, and brought drought-tolerant plant and installed drought-tolerant plants. In the words of the applicant, "The entire transformation has not only improved the curb appeal of our property in our South Livermore neighborhood, but has encouraged a proliferation of birds, bees, and butterflies. A new ecosystem has emerged, bringing beauty in so many varied forms. What could be more wonderful?" Is our awardee? The next awardee is 455 Olivina Avenue, which is Hagaman Ranch, a city-owned property managed by the Livermore Heritage Guild. In the words of the applicant, "The front lawn area has recently been updated with a decomposed granite walking path and two side gardens featuring turn-of-the-century plantings. Roses were a favorite of multiple families that lived on the ranch and are prominently featured in the side gardens. As most homesteads in this area had orchards, the landscaping near their house now also has peach, apricot, apple, plum, cherry fig, and citrus trees." So I'd like to present this award to the president of the Heritage Guild, which is Will Barton. And our final applicant is 522 Hazel Street. The awardee has created a beautiful cutting garden consisting of bulbs, annuals started from seeds, and perennials. In the words of the applicant, "I consider my garden as my retirement job and typically spend two to three days, two to three hours per day and three or four days a week, working in one of my more, one or more of my small gardens. My neighbors have thanked me for beautifying the neighborhood, and I've had people drive by and stop to compliment my efforts. I welcome any visitors to my garden and usually offer a cup bouquet if someone comes by, which is a lovely thing to do." Is our awardee from 522 Hazel Street here? Thank you. That is all for me. Any question?
Thank you very much, yes.
Just a quick question, since it does take some time to do this kind of work. For people who are interested in the 2025 beautification awards, roughly when would the application and the process begin for that?
I believe it's around September would be started either or the end of August to September and October it would be open, yes. So we would love to have people nominate their gardens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And remember to take a picture of the before.
That's always hard to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, looking at the audience tonight, we got a bunch of folks here. So we have work to do tonight. So what I'm going to do is reorder the agenda. 6.1 has been continued. So I'm going to go directly to 6.2, and then we'll do open forum and the consent calendar afterwards. So we're going to go to 6.2 directly.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Mardesova. Item 6.2 is going to be presented by Steve Stewart, Special Projects Coordinator in the Community Development Department Planning Division. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, members of the council. My name is Steve Stewart. I'm a Special Projects Coordinator in the Planning Division. I am also joined this evening by Rebecca All, Vice President at Lampier Gregory, our Environmental Consultant for the project, as well as our legal team with Catherine Mirsu, our your Deputy City Attorney, and Daniel Gullab, Partner at Holland at Night, and Deborah Grundy, Associate at Holland at Night. So we're here this evening to present the Garaventa Hills Residential Project. So the site does have an extensive land use history. It's had residential land use designation since at least the city's 1976 general plan. But we're here this evening to, as the result of an appellate court decision following the city council's approval of the project back in 2019. The Save the Hill Group challenged the council's approval and the EIR certification of the project. So in 2020, the Superior Court denied the lawsuit in its entirety. But in 2022, the appellate court ruled that the environmental impact reports, no project alternative, did not include sufficient information regarding the potential of availability of funding for open space acquisition and preservation of the project site. The Court of Appeal did, however, uphold the EIR on all the other grounds. So in accordance with the appellate court's direction, the city council did rescind the certification of the EIR and the project approvals about two years ago in November 2022. Lafferty Communities has since exercised their right to bring the project back for review by the city and address the appellate court's decision. So they're proceeding with the same project that was approved and evaluated in the prior EIR. And consistent with the Superior Court order and Court of Appeal decision, a recirculated partial environmental impact report has been prepared to analyze the potential availability of funding for open, to acquire the property as open space. So we'll discuss a little bit more of the environmental impact report later in the presentation. So the 32-acre site is vacant. It's located in between Vasco Road and Loughlin Road up in the northeast part of the city. It's just immediately north of Altamont Creek Park and Altamont Creek Elementary School. And it's the last undeveloped site of the Merelissa Master Development that actually also created the park and school site and nearby homes. On the screen is the project that was approved by the city council in April 2019. Less than half the site, about 40%, is actually developed with roadways and home sites. The remainder is in open space in the form of the knolls and the surrounding buffer. You'll see the numeral ones on the site plan designate single-story units that were added at the direction of the city council. The lots in yellow are the affordable duets that the applicant's providing to meet the city's inclusionary ordinance. The red trails that traverse the site are more formalized and would be open to the public, maintained by the Homeowners Association of the Development. And then, an emergency vehicle access bridge across Altamont Creek via an extension of Hawk Street is shown in the lower left. And another connection in the lower right hand of the image to another bridge across Altamont Creek. So the project is consistent with the general plan and other existing laws like the Livermore Development Code. Therefore, the city will be acting this evening in its quasi-judicial role and standard of review. So in this adjudicatory role, the city council's discretion is limited to judging whether or not the project actually meets existing laws like the Livermore Development Code. So if the council finds the project complies with our laws and codes, then the council is required to approve the project, although you may impose conditions appropriately and lawfully. Project has a variety of architecture, which increases the compatibility with existing nearby neighborhoods. They reflect attention to detail and a high-quality use of materials. The home sizes are comparable to the surrounding developments and include five different floor plans. The duets are two-story and located on the corners where they can, they will appear as single-family homes from the streetscape. And again, those are also done in high-quality materials. As the agency with discretionary approval over the project, the city is the lead agency under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA for short, and the city is required to consider all of the environmental implications of the project. And to meet this end, an environmental impact report was prepared. And through thorough analysis of all of the environmental topic areas and more detailed looks into hydrology, biological resources, geological resources, and traffic, the EIR was able to conclude there are no significant and unavoidable impacts. All impacts are less than significant or reduced to that level through mitigation measures, and all other topics have no impacts or less than significant impacts. So consistent with the Court of Appeal decision, the recirculated partial environmental impact report analyzes the potential of available funding to acquire the site and preserve it as open space in the no-project alternative. And again, the Court of Appeal did find all of the Save the Hill Group's other challenges regarding biology impacts to the hydrologic impacts, the Springtown, I think to be meritless. And again, the applicant's proceeding with that same project. So there are no changes to the project impacts that were evaluated in prior environmental impact report. And in accordance with CEQA, the recirculated partial EIR is limited in scope to just discussing the availability of those funds for preserving the site in open space. So the schedule on the screen shows some of the milestones that were reached in the preparation of that document, including its release on July 30th, a public hearing by the Planning Commission to receive public comments. The 45-day period closed on September 13th, and the final environmental impact report that includes a response to comments was published on November 8th. And then, most recently, on November 12th, the Planning Commission considered the project and recommended the city council certify the EIR and approve the project. So the city did receive 12 letters and emails from persons or groups commenting on the recirculated partial draft EIR. In addition to the comments received at the August 20th Planning Commission meeting, the city only needs to respond to comments that were within the scope of the EIR. However, the response to comments does include responses to the other comments that were outside of that scope. Those types of comments expressed concern with significant new information regarding the project's potential to impact or increase the risk of flooding, presence of hydrocarbons in the area, impacts to biological resources, and exposure to wildfire. All of those topics were addressed already in the environmental impact report. And staff considered all those comments and concluded there's no significant new information presented that would require the environmental impact report to be recirculated. Other comments included just general opposition to the project, concerns with air quality, traffic, and views. And again, those are previously addressed in the EIR. The response to comments actually will direct the reader to the exact locations of where those are addressed in the previous EIR. So again, the Court of Appeal upheld the adequacy of the EIR on all issues except the discussion of acquiring the property at open space and focused on these three methods for acquiring the property, which are shown on the screen here. Staff did, and those are listed there. So staff did present a grant proposal to the Altamont Landfill Open Space Committee. The committee voted to not fund the acquisition because there was not a willing seller. That would have been contrary to their policy and their past practice. Staff also reached out to the Citizens for Balanced Growth under the Dory Valley Settlement Agreement to meet and confer, as required under that agreement. The Citizens for Balanced Growth declined to meet and confer regarding this property and many other properties the city was acquiring and are in the process of acquiring. We have emails and letters in the record on the reaching out and trying to meet and confer there. Use of eminent domain. To acquire the property from an unwilling seller, if it could be defended legally, it would be costly between $17 to $25 million, and contrary to the city's past practice. Those funds, like the transferal development credits funds, are also not eligible because the property is within the urban growth boundary, and our other funds are prioritized elsewhere. So based on analyzing the availability of those funds, the recirculated partial EIR concludes on the basis of substantial evidence that the property owner is not a willing seller, and therefore it's ineligible for grants from the Altamont Landfill and Dory Valley Settlement Agreements. We've talked about using eminent domain. And then, the project also has a long-established residential designation and is currently designated residential in the general plan and also identified as a site in the site inventory of our current housing element. And so, in conclusion, the project is consistent with the general plan, the Livermore Development Code, design standards and guidelines, and other applicable development standards and ordinances. The site is within the urban growth boundary, and the project is comparable in development pattern to neighboring residential developments. The EIR indicates the site can be developed without significant impacts to the environment and supports this infill development at a density envisioned under the current general plan and the housing element. And the Planning Commission staff are recommending the council adopt the resolution certifying the EIR and adopt a resolution approving the subdivision and site plan design review. That includes staff presentation. The applicant is here and would like to make a statement. We're available for questions now or following the applicant's statement.
I'll go to hear from the applicant's comments first. Thank you.
I'm Mayor Marshawn. Vice Mayor Carling. Councilmembers, staff, audience members. My name is David Ragland. I'm the president of Lafferty Communities, as well as the property owner, which is Livermore LT Ventures. Steve did a phenomenal job in presenting a very technical and long-drawn-out process. Again, I appreciate that very much, Steve. Thank you. Our request tonight is fairly simple. We're consistent with the staff report's recommendation for approval of the, and to approve once and for all, the Garaventa Hills project, the vesting tentative map, the revised, recirculated EIR and the design review. You'll notice that there isn't a request or a need to rezone the property. The property has enjoyed residential zoning and general plan designation since the mid-1970s. From the time of our original development application up through the initial approval, Lafferty Homes held several community outreach meetings with local residents as well as with city staff. And we took a lot of that feedback in and made revisions to the land plan. We heard loud and clear that the community design must be subordinate to the landfill. As a result, some of the changes we made is we revised the unit count from the original 76 down to 44, almost half of what the zoning allowed for. We greatly reduced the development impact, the footprint, thereby preserving all of the wetland features as well as most of the natural beauty features, the rockout cropping, the view sheds. The project provides affordable housing, which helps the city meet the state-mandated affordable housing requirements, and its additional housing stock, which California needs desperately. We revised what was originally a vehicular access bridge to a pedestrian-only EVA to allow more access to the existing trails. We also are going to enhance those trails, building new trails, allowing the general local residents to continue to enjoy, as they have been, the existing trails on the project. The architectural design took all of the viewscapes into consideration, trying to minimize the impact of the homes on the viewsheds, providing roof articulations, paying attention to things like floor area ratios and setbacks to really enhance the overall aesthetic of the community. The result of all of this ongoing community collaboration is a very well-designed 44-lot infill community, which complies with the city of Livermore's affordable housing requirements. The site in total is about 32 acres, and the development footprint is about nine acres, leaving well over 60, almost 70% of the site as permanent open space to be maintained and owned by an HOA. The beauty of the site with the natural rockout cropings, the views, the hills, wildflowers will be preserved in perpetuity. The community design also includes a mitigation measure to help capture the naturally occurring tar, which would flow into the creek and impact the nearby Altamont Creek Elementary School. The project you're being asked to approve tonight is exactly the same as was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council previously. There have been no changes to the project. The project impacts, environmental impacts remain the same. The mitigations remain exactly the same. In addition to myself, I have some team members here. Rick Lafferty, the visionary and owner of Lafferty Communities is here. Alicia Guerra, who is our land use and entitlement attorney, is in the audience. Bob Besh of NGO Geotech, our souls engineer is here. Dominic Karucci with RJA, the civil engineer is here, as well as Mark Rutherford with WHA Architects, the designer of the homes. In conclusion, the property has been zoned for close to five decades and has maintained its residential designation through numerous general plan amendments and updates. It's well-designed to contour to the natural beauty of the land. So in conclusion, I ask for your support in approving this outstanding residential community, and I would also request And I would also request time, if appropriate and necessary, at the end of the public comment to be able to respond to any public comment that is made. With that, can I address any questions? That concludes our developer presentation.
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Doug Mann, followed by Bianca Covarelli, followed by Dennis Kai.
I have a companion video of the hazmat oil cleanup operation that regularly takes place at Edgewater. You probably can't see it very well, but if if you have a chance, you should go out when they do those cleanups. It's a pretty extensive operation that they that they do. Representing citizens for balanced growth tonight, we submitted comments on the to the September twelfth planning meeting that are included in your packet. Please consider them as submitted anew today as well. The responses Lampier Gregory gave to the new information we provided are largely inadequate. Lampier Gregory seriously expects all of us to believe that the new information is not new information, that re-triggering C Q doesn't really exist. It is a playbook to deny and avoid discussing anything that may impede the goal of building the project. They cite inapplicable statutes, perhaps expecting no one will notice. They reference voluminous and already superseded content, which overly complicates simple concepts and defeats clarity when the job should be to clarify so that you can make an informed decision. The facts we have provided are a small fraction of the new hazards you should be seeking to analyze. For example, we only recently learned that natural oil existed for years coming up through the soil surface at the house closest to where the Garaventa Hill construction will take place. This is less than sixty feet away. Oil was not recognized as a factor before Bear Creek was built, and there is no clear evidence that Lampier Gregory's prescription to effectively deal with the near certainty of striking oil will provide long-term protection. We are a volunteer organization. None of us gets paid for the public service we provide. As a five oh one C three determining how well, as a five oh one C three, determining how hazardous a development may be is the purview of the lead agency. This development is a hazard to Altamont Creek, the downstream wetlands and neighborhoods. The financial externalities of any required cleanup infrastructure have not been investigated. The newly discovered potential hazards will require at least a new hydrologic study and a new geologic study. Both of these reports should be produced by firms not conflicted and don't have prior associations with the applicant or Lampier Gregory. You have not yet completed your job. If you vote in favor of the staff recommendations, your action will be illegal. You won't be able to rely on Holland and Knight or Reese Judicata to make it legal in this case. Thank you and best wishes to you and your staff for the work ahead.
The next speaker is Bianca Covarelli, followed by Dennis Kai, followed by Vladimir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council staff. I'm Bianca Covarelli, Save the Hill group. I submitted comments on September twelfth on the R P draft E I R that are included in your packet. The responses Lampier Gregory gave to the new information provided are inadequate. The facts provided are hazards that you should be seeking to analyze. For example, there is currently significant oil seepage from the top of Bear Creek at Garaventa entrance. One of the residents located closest to that entrance has had oil in their surface oils. On October sixteenth and twenty-second of this year, a hazmat company was onsite on Edgewater and Noel Way, siphoning oil from the street manholes, from the dirt path grate and from the manhole in the common area along the Altamont Creek. Five tanker trucks were filled between the two days of siphoning. That is a massive amount of oil material coming out of Bear Creek and Garaventa. I videoed the process in an interview I held with a city employee who stated the oil is seeping down from the top of Bear Creek at the entrance of Garaventa. I also have photos of oil seepage in the Altamont Creek in another location. Clearly, it's not contained. The odor of oil and tar is prevalent in the area all the time. The hazmat specialist siphons the oil in the tanker. Trucks wear hazmat suits, which questions the level of toxicity of this material. Backstory, houses were built on Bear Creek, Noel Way, Edgewater in ninety-nine. There were several oil leaks in that area in early two thousands. Residents witnessed the oil leaks that estimated thousands of barrels of oil. The cleanup process took months after that time an oil derrick was installed by the homes. The oil derrick was removed around twenty-ten and an underground oil separation and filter system was installed on Edgewater. This is highly concerning. There is significant oil seepage flowing down directly from uphill on Bear Creek and Garaventa. None of the residents have been notified about these oil spills. The residents were not notified about the massive oil cleanups, nor have they been notified about potential health risks and environmental impacts. I witnessed pregnant moms, a plethora of residents with their dogs and parents pushing babies in strollers, walking along that path. These comments have been made many times, questions have been asked, and yet they have been left unanswered and ignored. What are the health risks for the existing homeowners who live on Bear Creek, Noel Way and Edgewater? What are the environmental impacts of the significant oil leaching from Garaventa and Bear Creek that is far from being contained? And what are the environmental impacts of the substance leaching into Altamont Creek? These are significant concerns and require the council to demand further assessment over anything else. In request, I'm requesting you hire an outside consulting geologist and hydrologist to perform current studies, proper analysis and assessment to address these significance, possible health concerns and environmental impacts. These are very serious concerns I ask you to take seriously. These risks alone should stop any talks of a project at this time. The earth cannot be disturbed at Garaventa clearly. You have residents living on top of these hazardous conditions now that may be seriously more concerning than you know. The health and safety of Livermore's residents, the environment, the species habitats on and around the Garaventa Hill and the wetlands and Altamont should be your number one concern. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dennis Kai, followed by Vladimir, followed by Alan Marling.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, council members. It seems like everything was already said. There's not much more I can add to that, but I do want to bring some things out to hopefully kind of set that stage for us, right? Environmentally sensitive area. You know that you've got the burrowing owl, which is now gone. You know why it's gone. It was supposedly an endangered species, but it's due to develop. That was posted back in the news about eight months ago. So we lost burrowing owls out there on the hill.
Mr. Kai, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So we did lose some burrowing owls. I don't know if they're still there. I haven't seen them in years, but they were back there when they first had to redo twenty-eighteen. You have the red-tailed fox that's out there. When we first came in here in ninety-nine, it was supposed to be a sensitive area out there and people were not supposed to be walking down there. Now you're going to put a footbridge over there. You already have people walking all through the area. That may have caused the loss of that red-tailed fox. I couldn't tell you. I haven't been out there looking for them. But we also talked about oil. Oil that's there has been there and the mitigation that is supposed to have been put in place to handle it. Well, it failed. That mitigation was not being maintained by the city. What happened to our vigilance? What happened to that? There were two oil spills there. Fire department knew nothing about it. They came to the second spill around two thousand and six. Alls we received as homeowners there was a letter that came in the mail. Not one council member, nor the mayor, or anybody in the city considered to be our leaders, came down there to assure us what's being hap what was going to happen. It took over sixty days to clear the oil out of that holding tank. That's at the corner of Edgewater and Noel Way. So my question to you is what are you going to do to be vigilant? Now, Lafferty has also stated, so did the planning commission, that you have mitigation portions in in effect to help prevent bleed off of the new turf that you're going to put down in those areas so it doesn't impact the alkaline sink. Well, if mitigation failed with the oil in our area and the other site is considered oil indeterminate, even though you may have done your drilling down to sixty-two feet, at what level did you start? How far down did you go? That oil doesn't just start and is isolated just to the Noel Way Edgewater. You know it has to be out there. So we're asking you, we're asking you to go back in and get another environmental report and do it with a unbiased third party. So get a good environmental report. From that perspective, I want to say thank you, but also some of the. In closing, some of the extensions you've done there from the city where you've extended electrical out to the site, who's paying for that? That should be the developer if you decide to move forward with it.
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
I'm sorry?
If you could wrap up your comments, please. You're starting a new train of.
So I want to say thank you for your time and hopefully you'll take that all into
The next speaker is Vladimir, followed by Alan Marling.
So the oil issue has been harped on enough, but I just wanted to point something out, the timeline, if this is important, because it shows how you guys do business. When Steve Stewart and Paul Spence presented us this E I R about a year ago and Dennis Kai brought up the issue of hydrocarbons to them, they both had no idea what was going on. And now, when you present the same E I R that you've been presenting for the last ten years, you say that the hydrocarbon issue is adequately addressed. So there seems to be a disconnect there, an important one. I think you need to go back and look. Maybe you should actually read it first and then tell us what's in there because even after ten years, you're not sure what's in there. So maybe you should be. The other thing is the developers' comments, he said that this area has been zoned as residential since nineteen-seventy. And I wonder why nothing's been built there. Makes you think. You think when the initial developer came in and tried to and built everything that they built around this area, that they didn't consider building on the hill too? They had reasons. And if you read the initial E I R, there were extent extensive environmental reasons why they didn't proceed. And I'm surprised that, living in California, somehow environmental laws have been relaxed to allow you to proceed with this development? That doesn't make any sense. And also to the developers' comments, the initial housing development that was proposed was very dense, very bad, not respectful of the environment. The only reason that was changed was through these litigations and people speaking and so forth. So I don't put faith in the developers' goodwill to change any of these things. If we had left this to them, then the hill would have been unrecognizable. So we're going to proceed with these litigations and so forth, right? Because that's the only language you speak and see how and see where we end up. The other thing I wanted to speak about was that all these areas around us have become high, high risk for wildfires. And I know you're putting an emergency bridge there. I'm sure it's going to be one lane only, but we only have one exit out of that entire neighborhood and that's Laughlin Road. You're adding more developments to that area. You're going to create congestion if there is any sort of disaster, including wildfires. There isn't adequate ways for people to exit. The other thing that the E I R is not addressing adequately is recent rainfall and flooding. There was flooding on Bear Creek and due to the rainfall, there's also increased wildlife activity, let's say, like Frick Lake has filled up all the way for the first time in five years. I know, I'm almost done.
If you'd please.
Yeah, and I I've even seen a California tiger salamander in our neighborhood in the bluffs, and I know that's a protected species. I didn't think I'd see one myself. But due to the increased rainfall, you need to actually consider the wildlife that's there before you proceed with this development. Thanks.
The last speaker is Alan Marling.
Mayor and council members, the applicant has made some good changes in not building on the hilltops and maintaining a walking bridge. If building fewer single family homes is good, perhaps building none on Garaventa Hills may be even better. Single-family suburbs are the least sustainable form of housing. It is true that California has a desperate housing shortage. Single occupancy homes is the least effective way to resolve that and largely because they are car reliant and could result in further congestion in the city and on five eighty. Now, I admit that today there was less in-person opposition to the project than I expected. However, if this is a largely unpopular development, this may not be a fight that's worth fighting when the end goal is more of the same unsustainable suburb, single-family occupancy homes.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you. At that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Questions by the council?
I represented district two where Garaventa is. Where Garaventa is, I got involved with this one years ago and we were looking to buy the property and funds that were available weren't disclosed disclosed, so we kind of dropped that area, that mission. But I'm not sure if anybody who's spoken or for it is lives there. Would you buy a house that you know there's oil around? And when the floods came a couple of years ago, there was a sheen on the the catch basin there with oil. And then when Maureen came to wash down into the Altamont Creek and I guess a little crew has dealt with it. And I have seen rabbits there once, but not anymore, of course. Then I'm not sure if I'm satisfied with the E I R. And we the developer talks about should they strike oil when they start digging for the pipelines? There's some stuff you can put there, overexclusion and engineer and fill method. Do we have any evidence that that's going to work or has anybody seen it work before? And if you ever go out there, which I'm sure none of the planning commissions went out there, you can smell oil. You'll get whiffs of it. There's a gentleman that showed me, oh, I went out there because I live there and I want to see. I didn't know if the tankers were there and that would have raised more of a concern than it, but no one told me about that the tankers were there sucking up the oil. And we saw that where the drainage goes once the water gets sorted filtered with the filters that you pull out. Hazmat men have to come in with hazmat suits to go down there to get this stuff out. So that's your neighborhood. Would you appreciate that or would the value of your house go down? The other question is, so so, you know, is there, my question is that, you know, do the, it's hypothetical, can we re-trigger the C Q thing again, just check it out again? And I also like to know, can we, I guess Jason can answer this, can we ask for more facts and more studies on it to see what how this oil is going to be taken care of? Because what we're concerned about is once you start digging up there, and I'm not sure if you know how oil pockets are filled, but they do kind of, when it gets, the earth gets moods, pockets start coming up with oil. And I really didn't know that we had an oil drilling rig over on nearby across the freeway that would they actually pump oil out of by, what do you call it? Where we're thinking about annexing the land on Greenville and apparently that shut down a couple of years ago, they actually pumped oil out of there. So there's oil in the area. So. So my question is, again, can we do some more study on it and make sure? And the other thing is, if you live there, if something happens to a child that gets sick from whatever sulfur that comes up around the houses. One house, a gentleman showed me that there was sulfur smelling right next to his house and he wondered what it was. He goes, when you figure shovel in it, it's like putting your shovel into a peanut butter. It's real thick. And then when they started coming down and tried to get the oil out, it kind of went away, but he was concerned that he did smell the sulfur and it was there for years. So are we going to guarantee houses to build there that, oh, don't worry about it? So are we going to guarantee houses, so we build there, that, oh, don't worry about it? That if oil starts seeping around you, just ignore it? Or maybe get a free gas tank out of it? Anyway, so I'm concerned about the, the whole development. And I'd rather see forty-four trees put there than forty-four houses. And I'm sure that it's not going to really help affordable housing. What's affordable duet going to cost? A million dollars? And I don't think anybody here could probably afford it. So as far as helping people who can't afford a house, I know some people here would love to have a house here, but they can't afford it. Even the affordable housing units that we offer around here. And they earn two salaries, and they still can't afford it. So my concern is, and, you know, I'm not going to gain anything out of it one way or the other on this property. I don't have the vested interests. I, I'm just a retired teacher, so I don't have a ton of money sitting around somewhere so I can go buy a bigger house. So I'm concerned about what's going on there. And I hope that we can table it and have some more, like a third party come in and check it out and see, can this oil be taken care of? Will it come up? Will it be guaranteed to the parent? Will the people buying a house say, hey, by the way, there might be oil here? Are we going to say that to the people that buy the houses there? And, you know, yeah, I'm sorry to throw a little monkey wrench in this, but, you know, I'm supporting and hoping my constituents understand that, you know, I do fight for them. And, and I think the good thing that happened with the division of the four districts now that we actually had representation in that second district before. We never had anybody to talk about or to support the people there. And when I went and campaigned, they said, they ignore us. They don't care about us. And right now, I think they're feeling the same thing right now. That's it.
Yes.
I do.
Questions?
Well, I might point out that Steve Spodasky was in your district. So he was a representative from that area, just to be clear. I do, I do, so I'm asking again to make sure I understand. This is quasi-judicial decision this evening, is that right?
That's correct.
And from the point of view of the, whatever, appellate court, the EIR was adequate with one exception. That was the no project alternative, is that true?
That's right.
And being adequate includes any of the hydrocarbon issues, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Brandon, questions? Okay, have a question. Okay, Councilmember Kik.
Can you clarify for me, City Attorney, the purpose of, or Steve Stewart, the purpose of SEQA? My understanding is that SEQA is supposed to take a look at what housing might do to the land, not what the land might do to the people. Is that a correct interpretation?
That's correct interpretation.
Okay. So we're basing our decision, our quasi-judicial decision, on laws that currently exist. Whether we agree with the validity of those laws or not, the impact of oil on potential residents is not protected under SEQA because SEQA does not protect what land might do to people. It's what development by due to land.
That's correct.
Okay.
So one of the speakers tonight talked about oil spills. And he referred specifically to a, a, a tank, an oil-holding tank that had spilled. The staff report, and of course, there's, there, there was an oil extraction well over on Patterson Pass, there were a couple of them. And interestingly, the environmental community came out and see, there was a legal action filed to stop the removal of the oil, which is actually contaminated the groundwater in that area. So we know that there's, there's, there's oil in the Greenville sands. So is the leak that was referenced, is that actually a, an oil tank that's leaking? Or is it, are these seeps coming from natural seeps?
It's my understanding they're natural seeps.
So they're natural seeps. So those natural seeps have been going on as, as long as we know.
That's right.
And so the applicant tonight spoke to the fact that they were going to be installing mitigation to collect these seeps so that they, they mitigate the impact on the creek. So if those mitigations are not put in place, these oil seeps will continue unchecked continually. So that the residents in that area will continue to be impacted by these seeps if nothing is done.
That's right. So the project would install mitigation measures in, in the event hydrocarbons or oil are experienced in the construction of the project or ongoing?
Or ongoing, right. Okay, so this is a naturally occurring seep. It's like, this is something, when you go out to the beach, you'll see these globs of oil. And those are from natural seeps. Similarly, what was out on Patterson Pass Road, that's a natural seep that's coming up, up through the ground. Okay, but what we're being assured is that with the, if this development does go in, there will be mitigations put in place for this natural oil seep.
In the event they're encountered, yes. But our studies have indicated that they do not exist on the site, nor are there Greenville sands on the site.
Okay. But there is, there have been, in the, in the staff report, they do refer to, to natural oil seeps.
That's right.
Just, just leave it on. Okay, so this has been included in the general plan since nineteen seventy-six, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And this is actually, I think, the fourth time I've considered this. You know, go back to two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen. And I remember the first time I heard this project, there were seventy-six homes. And one of the ongoing comments that we heard was concerned about that the project, and that the project was subordinate to the land. And I remember that, you know, because as a chemist, that's a term that I'm not used to, but subordinate to the landforms, and that there be no silhouetting against the ridge lines. And with the project going from seventy-six homes to forty-four, as I have read through the staff report, those concerns have been, have been mitigated.
That's right.
Okay. And again, going back to the, the EIR, looked at all of these issues. And the EIR, to the court's satisfaction, addressed all of these with the exception of the funding, identification for the funding of a no-project alternative. But it's also my understanding that the funding really is irrelevant because it requires a willing seller. And there is no willing seller in this case.
That's right.
Okay. The HOA, Homer Association, is required to maintain the bridge and the new outfall to the creek. Who, who oversees the, the HOA and the, again, the maintenance of the, the bridge and the, the outfall to the creek? Because that's one of the concerns we had regarding flooding.
Sure, so those two facilities would be ultimately managed by the city because they'll be in a community facilities district, the outfall and the bridge.
Okay.
So the city would have oversight of those.
Okay, so the city will be managing this, managing the bridge, and maintaining the bridge and the outfall. But the HOA and the CFD will be paying for that.
That's right.
Okay, all right. So there's been a lot of talk about, you know, concern about traffic. And so what was the design capacity for the road, Bear Creek Road going up?
Sure, so Bear Creek Road has a design capacity of about five thousand vehicles per day. Currently, there's about five hundred.
And it's, again, the project's forty-four homes.
Right.
And its capacity is five thousand vehicles per day, and currently about five hundred.
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you. And so the city owns about three hundred acres between the north and adjacent. And is that immediately to the, to the west? There's some open space lands there, and the city owns that.
Right, about three hundred acres, commonly known as the Springtown Preserve.
Okay, all right, that is the Springtown Reserve, okay. All right. Those are my questions. But this, again, going back to this, this seep, this is, what we've encountered is a natural seep. And what's proposed by the developer is mitigation if this seep continues to, to do what it's been doing for whoever knows how long.
That's right. And just, and then again, just to be clear, there are no seeps on the site, at least that were found during the boring and geological studies.
Okay. Somebody mentioned a spill out of a holding tank, but that's not what we're talking about here.
That's correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to speak to, thank you. I just wanted to speak again to the no-project alternative. Yes, you're right, there, I look to the city staff, we don't have a willing seller, do we?
No, we don't.
And, but it did come before the Open Space Committee back in April, at which point we were offering eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for open space, is that right?
Right.
And during that meeting, some of the public suggested that we should offer twice that amount to the, the owners of the property, is that true?
Yes.
And did we offer them twice that amount, so more than one point seven million dollars?
Yeah, it was close to one point eight.
Close to one point million, and what was their response? The owners?
Not interested, and please.
Not interested, and please stop asking. So, I mean, to the point, just to provide that information for the people that didn't, don't know, is despite the fact that we were stating there was not a willing seller, the fact is that we did try to ask them if they were interested in, for us, purchasing it, and they said no. And, I mean, one of the open space committee criteria is a willing seller. And so we do not have a willing seller. And therefore, the no-project alternative is kind of moot. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Yes.
My vote will be based on my legal requirement as an elected official in the quasi-judicial role. My comments are, as someone who is concerned about climate change, wildfire risk, flooding, things that I actually don't get to vote on tonight. I don't think we should be building any more single-family homes. But that's not the decision I'm, I'm making right now. I wasn't here when this project was first approved, or when that zoning was first approved. I have been here for the last four years as we've been attempting to move on with our general plan and change zoning and adjust zoning. I've been here for the past four years as we've been fighting about infill housing on a dirt lot that's been argued against. Wildfire risk, flooding, all of these things that SEQA does not address, unfortunately. SEQA doesn't care about the impact of the environment on people. It cares about the impact of houses on the environment in ways that maybe don't make a whole lot of sense. The decision being made tonight is not a decision I'm excited about. It's a decision that I am legally obligated to do, to do my job, which is to look at the current laws as they are and make an assessment on the current laws as they are. I'm not happy with what the current laws are. And I'm disappointed that I'm spending my last meeting voting on something that's been voted on over and over and over again instead of staff having time to finish our general plan so that we don't have designations from nineteen seventy-six. That designation is far older than me. So.
Makes me feel good.
I hope that no one has to vote on this ever again. So we can focus on our general plan, so that we can focus on infill development, so that we can focus on things that will actually address the concerns that I'm hearing about flooding, wildfire, heat, all the dangers that climate change are posing on our communities. So, you know, sprawling single-family homes are not going to fix that. I, tonight, with whatever vote comes forward, I'm not going to fix that. But I really, really hope that if anyone in the community says that they care about climate, that they will focus on letting us move forward with a new general plan that will allow for our city to meet our climate action goals. Something that we should have voted on already as a community has been pushed back because the department in charge of that is also in charge of consistently fighting against lawsuits, against housing decisions, which we don't actually have that much control over. So my duty here is different than my personal opinion. And I wish that we were instead having a discussion about how a, a new generation of leadership and zoning is going to mean that projects like this wouldn't even get this far because that's not what we're zoned for anymore. Because single-family zoning isn't going to be the, the normal practice of Livermore. But that's not where we are. So I do appreciate the, the edits that were made. The applicant has no legal responsibility to make any edits. And so considering the entire situation, I, I think it's, they made the best of a bad situation. Our community did, by, by pushing back on something. So those are my comments.
Mr. Brandon?
Thank you, Councilmember Kik. I don't have particularly much to say on this. I think that the courts have affirmed that the EIR covers all of the items that have been brought before us. I believe that the staff's response answered all of the concerns that were raised. And I did not personally see anything novel in there that was not addressed in the EIR. I agree with Councilmember Kik on many of the points that she just made. But in the role that we have right now, we are judging the project, actually not on the rules of today. We are judging the project on the rules of the day when the project began. And so the consistency with those rules have some things that we've actually updated since then. But because the project is continuing, it meets all of our requirements in a quasi-judicial role. I believe that the legal system has affirmed the EIR as is. I believe that we have updated the no-project alternative to meet the standards required in the case, for this case, for this project. It is legally compliant, and my job is to decide if I believe it is legally compliant or not. And that is my opinion.
Mr. Verentos?
I know. I know we have these rules and laws and all that. I get sick and tired of some, some were wrong. And I know in the good old days, rivers were allowed to be polluted. And then, ooh, they caught on fire. So now we don't do that anymore. So I think SEQA should start thinking about more about the people that it impacts and not the land and not the money that it brings in. I think that's mainly the biggest thing here. So they know, why would they take one point seven million dollars? Or even two million dollars? Because they could make like ten times more and sell them those houses. And that's what it comes down to, I think, just money.
Vice Mayor? Okay, but I, I've made my comments. I entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Kik, seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, it passes four to one with Councilmember Barrientos dissenting. Okay, very good, thank you very much, thank you for your comments tonight, sincerely appreciate them. With that, we're going to move on to item four point zero, it's the open forum. City Clerk will explain how the process works.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for all items on the consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the City Council, a speaker will be allowed one comment for each item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out a speaker card found at the entrance of the City Council chambers. And speakers, sorry. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin at the lectern. Thank you, Mayor.
Good, thank you, and do we have any public comments tonight for open forum?
Yes, sir, we do, the first speaker is David McWigan.
Johnny, the rapist protector Marshawn, the mayor who covers up rape. You need to STFU, stop talking for us. You get all the time you want to blather, but when a member of the public gets their three, chance to speak for three minutes, you need to STFU. Yet again, Johnny, you have chosen to deliberately slander me while acting in your official capacity. Declare me a threat to society because of a plea you know is worst slander. Worse, you willfully chosen again to violate my First Amendment right to redress my grievances with the government without fear of retribution. To date, I have been exceptionally patient because I don't want the people of Livermore to have to pay more for your corrupt incompetence, but my patience is finite. Further slander and/or violation of my civil rights will not be tolerated. You have been warned in front of your lawyer, multiple witnesses, and video documentation, so you can't say you didn't know. And you felt the need to blather on about ten, ten-year review of the Livermore Police that resulted in a glowing report. Everything where it's perfect, right? You're all a bunch of Boy Scouts, right? But why did you have to go to court to cover up rape, Johnny? Seems your detailed review missed a few important items. By the way, I'll agree with you on one thing, Livermore Police really are a bunch of Boy Scouts, since both organizations are well-known for harboring sexual predators. Only the Boy Scouts are trying to clean up their act. Now, if your house gets termites, Johnny, what do you do? Do you just splash a little paint on it and call it good? You do understand you have to address the underlying infestation, don't you? So an officer has sex with a woman and films the encounter without her permission. A complaint is filed, an investigation is conducted, and a meeting with the captain of parole is to discuss the appropriateness of, appropriateness of appropriateness of his actions to being a Livermore Police Officer. He came out of that meeting thinking that when his date passes out, it was okay for him to crawl up on her unconscious body and have non-consensual sex, rape, to satisfy himself anyway. Now, another complaint is raised, another investigation conducted, and another conversation with the captain of patrol about his behavior. And he comes out of that meeting thinking that the next time he gets a chance to sexually exploit a teenage girl, he's going to take it. These weren't conversations about behavior. After each one, he was more aggressive. These were training sessions for the sexual predator, Grumer. He promoted Captain Grumer to chief termite. He went to court to cover up rape. He splashed some paint around, Johnny, but what have you done to address the infestation that allowed a sexual predator to not just survive, but to literally thrive as a Livermore Police Officer? Anything? Now, that's why you're going to be remembered as Johnny, the rapist protector Marshawn, the mayor who covers up rape.
I'd like to point out that the city of Livermore just got a grant to protect the traffic and protect drivers from people like Mr. McWigan, who has pled guilty to driving drunk. So, thank you for your comments tonight.
The next speaker is Marty Sutton, followed by Doug Mann, followed by Vladimir.
Good evening, my name is Marty Sutton, I am board chair for Tri Valley Nonprofit Alliance. TVMPA is a five oh one C three organization with the mission to provide advocacy, collaboration, education, to strengthen the nonprofit organization, enriching our communities. And I'm proud that this year we celebrated our ten-year anniversary. At, on November thirteenth, we hosted our fourth annual Power of Giving event. We had so much fun strolling down the Yellow Brick Road, Road. I was Glinda, Kathy Young was Dorothy. And we showed how TVMPA has grown the past ten years into a successful organization and continue supporting our amazing nonprofit community. Dr. Darrell Foster interviewed Roberta Gonzalez about her experience with nonprofits and the importance of them in our community. And we gave out six awards to the nonprofit community. The nominees were nominated by community members and selected by leaders in our community. I'd like to congratulate our twenty twenty-four winners. Unsung Heroes Chuck Duckert and Lisa McNaney. We had so many people nominated for unsung hero, we decided to give out two awards this year. Lifetime Achievement Marsha McGinnis. Corporate Partner Fremont Bank. Arts and Culture Spark Theater. Nonprofit Under One Million Tri Valley Reach. Nonprofit Over One Million Open Heart Kitchen. I want to thank all of our nonprofits and community members who attended the Power of Giving, including Vice Mayor Bob Carling and Councilmember Branny. At this time of year, as we reflect on what we are grateful for, I'd like to share a few things that I am grateful for. I am grateful that TVMPA came into my life and gave me so much purpose. I am grateful for our nonprofit community who continue to make our community stronger and a better place to live. And I am grateful for the nonprofit leaders and staff who work tirelessly in our community. As we closed out the night at Power of Giving, I said to our nonprofits and community leaders, TVMPA is what it is today because of the heart, brains, and courage each of you has shared over the years. You are the power that fuels, fuels the work of TVMPA and keeps the spirit alive in our community. As we look forward to twenty twenty-five, I want all of us to use our brains, hearts, and courage to advocate for our nonprofit leaders and staff. It is time that we crush the overhead myth and pay nonprofit staff competitive wages so that they can live and work in the community, community while taking care of themselves and their family. So happy Thanksgiving and thank you again to our community for such a wonderful nonprofit world. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I would have been there for the tenth anniversary had I not, I, I'm the president of the Alameda County Mayors Conference, and that was the same night, otherwise I would have been there as well. So thank you for the great work that you do for our community.
The next speaker is Doug Mann, followed by Vladimir.
That was a nice introduction to my nonprofit, Citizens for Balanced Growth. That was a nice message that she had there. Citizens for Balanced Growth presents the following observations. On November fifteenth, Livermore lost another highly publicized case in Superior Court involving Livermore City Council's voter suppression activities. It was completely avoidable. CBG has a long history of witnessing unwise decisions by elected officials, even when they are fully apprised of exposure to legal consequences. Our first experience was in nineteen ninety-eight when the Zone Seven Water Board considered serving customers outside its legal boundary. A long line of respected officials and CBG members told them they were about to break the law. They ignored us, we sued them, and they lost. More recently, was the case of the Gervonta Hill Plan, where city officials obscured the existence of funding after they were, after they were asked if there was money that could be used to buy it instead of developing it. Livermore was sued, lost on the merits at trial court, lost on appeal, and, and failed in its final act of desperation to erase the result at Supreme Court. Remember the Livermore Wine Country Inn? We told council over and over that they were breaking the rules. The city was sued and lost. The Act of Voter Suppression in twenty twenty-two by city staff and aided by council was a new level of hubrist, hubristic malfeasance. Against a backdrop of abundant case law and constitutional precedent, the city attorney recommended that the city clerk hold on to referendum petitions instead of sending them to the county in the usual manner. He instructed that the city clerk could act as judge, jury, and executioner of a perfectly valid referendum. We cautioned the council against their illegal activity, including citing obvious case law. The city was sued and Livermore was defeated in a scathing rebuke. Apparently, that wasn't enough. The council had the gall to declare that the judge's order in this voter suppression case wasn't really the judge's order. We lined up to tell the council that they were breaking the law, so another lawsuit. The result was predictable in last week's decision. This is no way to run a government. And these self-inflicted legal defeats have cost Livermore hundreds of thousands of dollars. We are hopeful that the newly elected council representatives will be able to add some degree of rationality and prudence going forward. When residents advise council that they are about to break a law, that should mean something. If that happens, your constituents should expect you will heed that advice. Thank you.
The next speaker is Vladimir.
Well, I know you've already approved this terrible project, but I'll tell you, I just, I couldn't leave without pointing out some of the things that you're saying and how ridiculous they are, so I'm gonna say them anyway. You are so desperate to approve this project that you are putting aside the health of people, right? People who live there now, people, potential buyers. You're putting that aside and saying, well, my hands are tied, I, I can't protect the people here. I have to approve this project because this is some kind of law? That you are required to approve a project even though you, you think that it might hurt people's health? That's not a law. And the city has made many decisions before where it later goes to the courts and then it's overturned. So you aren't lawyers, you're not required to make decisions based on the law. You're required to represent people and do what you think is right. Just a reminder for you. I know you're, you're young, so you're desperate to continue your political career, but you should keep that in mind. Well, you are still compared to some other people, so, you know, separate yourself from the bunch, don't suck up to developers. The other thing is, Marshawn, you had a lot of questions regarding the soil. I don't know where you get some of them, but let me explain what's going on there. The oil is seeping out of the ground, nobody said there's a tank underground, there was no gas station there. The oil is seeping out of the ground, and there are tankers collecting the oil. I live there, so I know, I've seen it happening, I walk Edgewater and Bear Creek, and I smell the oil coming out of the sewers there. And from Edgewater. Recently, much more than ever. And to set the timeline clear as well, the EIR has remained largely unchanged since ten, ten years ago. The court regarding the funding, that was four or five years ago. The oil issue was not even mentioned anywhere or near that. The oil issue just came up recently, within the last year. So the courts never made a decision on the oil, so you don't need to say that the court has, the court is confined to a specific topic, they don't go over the entire EIR, did you know that? You think that they spent time looking over the whole thing and they approved of it? They looked at the funding issue, not the oil, the oil is recent. And just to remind you what I said earlier, Paul Spence and Steve Stork, when the oil issue was mentioned a year ago, they had no idea that that was even the case. Are you aware of that? That this is a new thing? You don't need to rely on an EIR that's ten years old and a court decision that's five years old? Did that cross your minds? Are you just plain fools? Honestly. Yeah, I know it's funny, yeah. Funny to you because you don't live there, but I live there, so. And Carling, you said, I'm gonna go over the timeline, I'm sorry, just by a few seconds, sorry. Carling, you said that the land is worth, you, you offered eight hundred K and then somebody told you to offer double. I've been very involved in this issue, I know the people who are. Nobody ever said to offer double. The land value is three to three, to three and a half million, the landowner sent an email to you saying so much, I've seen this.
If you will please finish up your comments, I'm trying to be fair to everybody.
Is there somebody else speaking after me? No, I don't think so.
Yes, there is.
Okay. Well. The land value is three and a half million, it was never one point eight, you lowballed the owner by more than fifty percent, and you considered that a fair offer, it never was.
So you did not consider the no fund, the, the no.
Vladimir P., will you please finish up your comments?
You weren't at the meeting, so you don't, you can't speak to that issue.
And just to, just to correct one of the misstatements from Mr. Vladimir, somebody actually spoke and said that there was a holding tank that spilled. Spilled was the actual term that he used, yes, he did, thank you. He used the term spill. I have known about tar sands and oil seepage in sands in this area for decades. So that is not new information to me at all, and to say that this was suddenly discovered a year ago, I've known about these oil sands for decades. We knew about them when I was on Zone Seven thirty years ago, so this wasn't new to me. Okay, I'm done, next.
That was the last speaker.
Okay, that was our last speaker, all right, moving on to the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any items for consent? Pardon me? Oh no, sun, sun setting at seven point one. So the consent calendar, you wish, had a comment on seven, on the consent calendar? Okay, comment?
It's actually a bit of a question and comment, it might require pulling it, but I want to check the staff first, I didn't run this by them, so prefer asking questions without knowing at least where we're going with this. On item five point nine, the city is basically helping someone get out of affordable housing fees, they're underwater right now. My question is basically, it includes a provision in there that we're going to allow them to keep five thousand dollars for rehousing, finding a new place. In the current market, I just feel like five thousand, given their situation, isn't gonna go very far, I'm wondering if just given kind of where we're at, do we have the statutory ability to make it, say, ten thousand, which might help them from slipping into homelessness later?
This is Paul Spence, your Assistant City Manager, yes, you could change that amount.
Okay.
Not a statutory requirement.
Would I need to pull the item to make a change to it, or could I change it as part of the whole consent?
If you're gonna propose a change to what staffs recommend, my recommendation would be you pull that and have a separate discussion.
Okay, then I'd like to pull item five point nine. And I'll basically wrap up my discussion with what my question was, I think that given the current market, five thousand, we risk this person going back into homelessness very quickly. And so I think ten thousand dollars might be enough to hopefully help them find housing and be able to maintain shelter moving forward.
Okay, in that case, what I would like to do is I would entertain a motion for five point.
Mayor, sorry, we do have one speaker for, for consent calendar.
Oh, for consent, okay, is it for, what, what item?
It's five point, he's speaking to the process of the consent calendar. It's five point.
To the process of the consent calendar, okay.
Hi, David McWigan?
Johnny, the rapist protector Marshawn, the mayor who covers up rape. I'm against the rule that only allows a three-minute comment period on all the items to, in the consent calendar. There are eleven items in the consent calendar tonight. Three minutes is only sixteen seconds an item, hardly a reasonable comment period. These are all separate actions, even if they are passed with a single vote. Limiting comments is events against a principle, if not the text of the open meeting laws. The limit really only accomplishes one thing, making it easier to pass just about anything without comment. I guess you just want to get home for the time to watch the end of Monday Night Football, huh? Thank you, Johnny, the rapist protector Marshawn, the mayor who covers up rape.
That concludes public comment.
Well, that was certainly worth it. Okay, with that, I would be willing to entertain a motion for five point one through five point eleven, and with the exception of five point nine, we'll hold that for, for discussion. Do I have a motion for five point, okay, moved by Councilmember Barrientos.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll take that as a nay. Okay, yes, okay, so it's unanimous, so for five point one through five point one one, with the exception of five point nine, moving on to. So for five point one through five point one one, with the exception of five point nine, moving on to a discussion on five point nine.
So my proposal with five point nine is simply the, the proceeds allowing the current owner to keep ten thousand instead of five thousand, so. Adding a little bit of extra money and my rationale being that I think five thousand dollars, we greatly risk this person slipping back into homelessness with the cost of, you know, just first and last month at most places will wipe out the entirety of the five thousand.
Can I ask a question? How five thousand was reached?
Yeah, we based that on like deposit first and last month's rent of like an efficiency dwelling unit, so the five thousand were not cemented in concrete. And that would just, if we did increase it to ten thousand, would reduce the money back to the city's affordable program by five thousand dollars and it's right around ninety thousand right now.
So, sorry, I have another, sorry, I have another question. So. And what is the rent she determined on an efficiency unit?
Oh, somewhere in the two thousand dollar range.
I mean, unless there's something magical about where she's applying, the last time I moved as a renter, it cost me twelve thousand dollars just for first, last and deposit. My rent is thirty, was thirty-four when I moved in, but sometimes there's no like limit on deposit. So they can say, "Your deposit is seven thousand dollars." So I, I would just rather overestimate than underestimate. And we were in the financial position to be able to do that, to save up and move. So I would agree that maybe our assessment needs. Be, and also this is assuming that she's gonna get an efficiency unit. There's usually wait lists for those. And so she's guaranteed to be able to move into something market rate because market rate is usually not a wait list, right? But efficiency units, I mean, our waitlist is quite long for those kinds of rentals, so. Yeah, I, I would just agree with your, your assessment on price.
Okay, so the, would you like to make the motion?
I would like to move item five point nine with the amendment that it would be, provide ten thousand dollars of proceeds to the seller for rehousing.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Councilmember Kick. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to seven point one, this is the matters for consideration. This is whether or not to sunset the Livermore Dublin Liaison Committee, Pleasanton Liaison Committee and the Intergovernmental.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the City Council, this is once again your City Manager, Mariana Mardesheva. Item seven point one is going to be presented by our City Clerk, Debbie Elam.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I am Debbie Elam, your City Clerk. Tonight's item before you is a resolution recommending sunsetting the Livermore Dublin Liaison Committee, the Livermore Pleasanton Liaison Committee and the Intergovernmental Committee, which is made up of elected officials from the City of Livermore, the School District and the Park District. On September ninth, City Council directed staff to review the committees for relevance. Over the years, the committees were created for council members to share information with elected members of partner agencies. These committees do not have decision or policymaking authority. They are an opportunity for members to share information. City staff currently meet with other agencies on items of concern and some recent examples are the Dublin Boulevard Extension, the SMP Projects, Springtown Open Space and School Safety. Staff have determined that city staff meeting with partner agency staff directly is more effective and action can be expedited instead of meeting as a brownneck body. Items requiring city council will be agendized at a city council meeting. City council currently receives project updates through the Critical Projects Report and other update opportunities. The public has the opportunity to provide comments directly to city council at a city council meeting as well as at the appropriate advisory body meeting, for example, the Airport Commission. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution sunsetting the Livermore Dublin Liaison Committee, the Livermore Pleasanton Liaison Committee and the Intergovernmental Committee. This completes my presentation and staff's available for questions.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment period on that. Bring it back to the council. What's the, so quick question I have for you. You are on intergovernmental. And intergovernmental had a great purpose when we were working on a mutual bond issue. I believe it was Measure L. And that was where the, the library and the Robert Livermore Center came out of that. And there was some value, but we haven't done anything like that for a while. And you sit on intergovernmental, so what, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so Councilmember Beriantos also does. So I think it has been nice sitting on intergovernmental. I think the interaction with the other agency bodies has been, you know, informative and, you know, good to have for positive relations. But we haven't had any action or business on the committee. It's been updates. I spoke with our city staff about it some and I actually personally would recommend, instead of us sunsetting it completely, moving it to an annual meeting so that we still have the structure there. If something does happen in the future, it'll be easier for us to bring it back online with that. The annual meeting would be more or less an update for all three departments to meet with each other and keep the communication lines open for electeds. But I do agree with staff's recommendation that it's just more efficient for staff to handle almost everything themselves.
You're saying the staff actually gets things done as opposed to some of the electeds?
Yeah, it's been, it's been mostly updates to, you know, here's what the Parks District is doing right now. Here's what the schools are doing right now. Here's what the city's doing right now. It's informative. I enjoy the meeting. But as far as a valuable use of staff's time, I don't think it's really there. So my recommendation is move it to a once a year meeting and we can evaluate if that's working.
Councilmember Beriantos?
We have a new city council coming in, right? Well, there's two of them right here. And I think the other cities have their new city council. I think we should table it and let them come and decide with us what to wanna do. I, I like the intergovernmental thing when I can make it to it. I think that we should add the police chief to it too. Because I wanna see what the police are doing too, but I thought it was a good interaction and to see these other people. You hear Superintendent, okay, I met her. So I, I'd like to see people in person, not, you know, hear about them. And I think, you know, it's no big, I think it's good interaction. So I, I'd like to table it and let the other two who are here now decide, you know, what they wanna do with it. I, I like not to sit and sit and keep them going for a while. I think people like going to them and get, and, you know, have public input on them.
Well, there, just so you know, the, the Police Department, our Police Department does meet with all the other chiefs every month. So they, they do have that, that intergovernmental component to it, so that's, since they are part of the city, we, we have this, this staff that work together as opposed to different agencies. That we're different elected agencies that are elected that have governmental bodies. You know, the governmental body of the Police Department is still the council. Council, Vice Mayor Carling?
Yeah, I was the one that brought this up, so.
Your fault.
And I could, yes, I know, but I can only speak to the Livermore Pleasanton Liaison Meeting and I'm, I mean, it's certainly possible that we could separate. There's three different sort of meetings here that we're talking about, so I'll only speak to the Livermore Pleasanton Liaison Meeting. First of all, liaison, it's not exactly that at all. If you look up the definition of liaison, it's supposed to be a cooperative. Cooperation between folks looking at a common kind of a issue and working together to work it out. And that's not at all what that meeting is about. I mean, we did get a, we did get an email from a person asking us to postpone a decision to the new city council. And I would, I would also point out that liaison committee was started back in two thousand one. And sometime, and apparently there's no evidence of what exactly when it stopped, except it's somewhere between two thousand one and two thousand ten. So it started again about two years ago. I think it started again when Mayor Warner was in your position. So we went twenty years without that meeting at all. And so I think if we were, and my recommendation would be to sunset the Livermore Pleasanton Liaison Meeting. And if the new city council wants to pick it up, be my guest. Because it's devolved from my point of view and other people. And I think it's inappropriate for other people outside of Livermore to give our staff working assignments. And that's what it devolved to. I'm looking to Brandon because he was the one taking all the notes at the last, but. So I would, I mean, I'd be happy to separate that one out from the rest, but I'd like to hear from Dublin. I think you're on Dublin, is that right? Who's on the Dublin Liaison Committee?
Me.
Besides you. Oh, okay. Well, anyway. My recommendation would be to sunset, for sure, the Livermore Pleasanton Liaison.
Councilwoman Kick?
The only, Livermore Dublin. Livermore Pleasant, I have like a.
Livermore Pleasant, Livermore Dublin.
Blitting headache. Yes, the city ones, I don't think serve a great purpose. We were not allowed to tell other cities what to do as a city council, so that seems like a waste of your time. I agree, what did you say, that we do it once a year. Only because if the structure exists, it's easy to call a meeting if necessary. So I know in the past, Intergov was extremely beneficial for the vaping effort that Livermore had, having that set meeting to figure out how to, how to create that milestone ordinance that, you know, many other California cities copied. Like there, there had been value there. I get in theory a future council could say, "Actually, we wanna bring that back," but that just seems like unnecessary extra work if instead it turns into one mandatory meeting a year and the rest are ad hoc as issues arise. We don't have any legal control over other cities, so don't do that one. Once a year, minimize as much of your staff time as possible while keeping opportunities open for the one group that did seem to have a history of positive outcomes. Sorry.
I just wanna add one thing on this, which is that for those two intergov, one, or not intergov, the inner city ones. I think the League of California Cities really fills that role pretty well for a lot of what we need to. And while there may be issues that do come up, I think, you know, we have a structure already for relationships between the cities. Staff has relationships between the cities and I think it's gonna be pretty rare that we have something where the cities are working together that isn't falling under either a regional initiative or something that the League of California Cities is, would be helping with. So I'd agree on sunsetting those. If we want to soften the blow, because we did get the letter from the City of Pleasanton, I would add on, not necessarily in the resolution, but direction to staff, that if the Pleasanton Council comes back and does say they see strong need for it, we can bring this to the next council as an item to consider. Spinning it back up, but from our perspective, I think it's pretty well agreed. It's not a, it's not worthwhile to continue using staff time for this. But I do understand Jerry's letter. I understand what he's asking for. And I think that it is very easy for us to spin this back up if necessary and if Pleasanton has a compelling argument why they would like to see it continue. Or if Dublin had a compelling argument, then I think that the future council will be rational and reasonable to listen to that. So as we send the letter, send that, I would request staff sends that as part of the messaging around assuming that we decide to soften it.
Oh, I disagree. I think we just sunset it. I mean, I appreciate Jerry's letter, but. It was okay, I mean, it was his staff, it was his electeds that were giving direction to our staff, which I found completely and utterly objectionable. And sure, it's no wonder he'd agree to that. Because he was, there, his electeds were giving the direction to our staff and I just found that objectionable and very inappropriate. So no, I mean, I appreciate Jerry's reaching out to us, but again, we went twenty plus years without this. And we've got the two new council members sitting here. If they see, if they see a need to restart it, be my guest.
I, I would also add on his whole, his whole premise of you can't make a decision because new leadership is coming in tomorrow.
Looney.
At what point does that matter? Should we have not have done anything for the past month and a half? So, just based on his argument alone, I, I don't agree, so. Because I would really like to go home. I'm gonna make the motion.
Hang on, hang on, I haven't got a chance to speak yet. That's all right. I'm only the mayor, you know? So that's me, people have to listen to me. So I'm, I'm on all these committees, or I've been on all these committees. And when we had Measure L, there was great value, I think, in, in having the Intergovernmental Committee. We're not working together on anything like that right now, so I think that that is reasonable. Having been on the Livermore Pleasant and Livermore Dublin Liaison Committees, there have been comments about, oh, well, this is another opportunity for the public to, to have a comment. And it, it's another opportunity to, to hear from different folks. And it's been my experience that it's just the same folks and it's the same information. I mean, I, we've had several of these liaison committee meetings and it's the same for people saying the same thing that they said in the council meetings. And if it's the same thing in the council meetings, you know, we've already heard it, so we don't need to have all of these. I think it would be more valuable than what we call this liaison, which it isn't. If, if the new council figures that there is a need, I think there'd be greater benefit into having an ad hoc committee that has a single purpose, where the roles are defined, what we're trying to accomplish and how we accomplish it. And then the committee goes away because it's done its job. I think this is, this is a committee that's looking for a resondetta and I don't think that's necessary for, for staff to support something like that. So I would agree that we could bring Intergov back to have those three have a, an update periodically, but I know that our city manager meets with the general managers of both of those other organizations. So she's getting the, the updates and whatever information we, we get are weekly updates from admin staff. So I would agree. I, I think that if we, if we decide to bring this back, we could bring it back as an ad hoc and then actually accomplish things, but these are just devolved into a, into a gripe session and with no real direction and no solution. And I see the Vice Mayor agrees with me.
Yeah, that's what it's devolved to, the gripe session. And you're right, it's the same people that we see here. I'm surprised they're not here tonight.
So with that, I will, oh, yes.
Oh, I was gonna make the motion.
I was gonna let the Vice Mayor make it.
I'll propose we sunset the two intercity, quote, liaison meetings and follow through on Councilmember Branning's suggestion about a yearly meeting, intergovernmental meeting. Is that sufficiently clear?
Second, okay, motion and second, any comment on the motion, any discussion?
Well, I'll go with you guys, but I think, like I said, if they wanna bring it back up, they can.
Okay, very good. Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
No, any opposed? Okay, passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Bringing back to council reports, matters initiated. Councilmember Beriantos, we'll start on your end this time.
I didn't do anything.
And you're proud of it.
Well, I'm starting my wrestling program all over again. I heard cats.
You're busy.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Branning?
So it's been a busy month for me. I've done a lot of things. Particularly enjoyed the. So it's been a busy month for me, I've done a lot of things, particularly enjoyed the TV NPA Power Giving. But as you may notice, I'm getting even scruffier than usual. I'm participating in the Ale House Beard Growing Contest, which raises money for Rooms of Hope. It's a great cause, they keep telling me that the beard will not be itchy at some point and I'm not believing them. But it has definitely been a fun, fun thing to do for No Shave November. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Kick?
Any commentary? I'll let you know in December when my brain is better functioning.
Vice Mayor Carling?
Thank you. Just a few things I wanted to point out, I, as several of us, several of us were at the TV NPA Power of Giving at the Bankhead, that was a terrific event. I also attended a Zoom on the East Bay Wildlife Connectivity Meeting, which was pretty interesting, I was sitting on the Open Space Committee. We've talked about and actually this Open Space Committee has funded UC Davis and another organization to look at wildlife crossings on six eighty but particularly five eighty in the Altamont. And another group of people are looking at what they might do in terms of building in the future wildlife crossings again over or under some highways to to protect wildlife and that was a, it was a pretty interesting meeting. Again, some faculty from some local universities and others that are concerned about wildlife in the area. On the twenty ninth, on that same day, we had the Laptah Hydrogen Fueling Facility Dedication, I think some of us were there, which is out near Draxel Meyer and Tesla. But again, as you may know, we're going to hydrogen fueled buses and again, I just want to point out that from the point, from the perspective of what we're trying to achieve with our Climate Action Plan, and by the way, I think I just saw that we bought a bunch of new electric vehicles as well, we we approved some police vehicles that are hybrids tonight. But I think the city has gone ahead and bought some electric, pure electric F one fifty trucks, I think, pickup trucks, so I again, I want to point out to the community that the city is serious about climate action and making strides in that arena. I'm surprised that maybe the mayor is going to mention on on the thirtieth, we had the Moon Tree Dedication, I'll let the mayor expound more on that. On the second, I participated in Sleep and Heavenly Peace of Bed Build out of Crosswinds. So as you may know, Sleep and Heavenly Peace is a nonprofit that builds beds for kids that don't have a bed in Alameda County, so they cover all of Alameda County. And the estimate is there are four thousand ish kids that go to sleep at night without a bed. And they're making a small dent in that, and so I spent some time that morning working with a bunch of other folks, you know, a few dozen people putting together roughly thirty, building thirty kits, because they, you don't actually put together a bed and then deliver. You take a kit over and assemble it at a, at a child's house, so that that's a pretty pretty cool thing that we do here in the community. On the Open Space Committee on the fifteenth, we had three more properties brought to that committee. The city brought to us looking for funding for more to purchase more open space. Again, trying to protect our urban growth boundary and again, I think we should, the city staff should be commended in terms of reaching out and and working on the developing and purchasing additional open space and I don't know what adds up to a couple of hundred acres worth of, I think, property we're talking about. Then on the twentieth, I had my final meeting with Stop Waste in Lavma, so Stop Waste is is this, this organization that looks at recycling and reuse, I think they're a tremendous group of people and professionals that look at that for the county, Lavma is Livermore Evernor Valley Water Management Agency, again, making sure that the water is clean and to the point of view when we pump it over the hill to to the bay, it's meets all the requirements of of environmental quality. On the twenty first, some of us were at Apapa, I know that Christie Wong is here, she invited my wife and I to join, this is celebrating Asian Pacific folks in our community and then today, City Serve had their prayer breakfast out at the Doubletree and I know some of the people in the audience and on the dais were there for that. It's a big event in terms of what's in honoring and addressing what City Serve does for this valley, and so I think it's a tremendous organization and it was well worth the time spent this morning listening, particularly, I think the most meaningful part was listening to testimonials from a couple of people that have been, one that was homeless and another person that has been, I think, in a sense, saved from going into homelessness because of working with City Serve and the kind of resources and services they can can provide. Thanks, that's good.
Mr. Mayor, I just remembered something.
Yes, Councilmember Beriantos?
I did attend, well, the hydrogen one too. The Ava, I just want to make sure people understand, we have six projects that Ava is gonna work with us over here, and one's gonna be a port over the police station and back and add solar panels to the water treatment plant and tomorrow at the airport, that's three that I can remember, but there are six altogether. So that's some good stuff coming our way.
Great things coming from Ava, thank you very much for being representative there. Okay, let's see, Vice Mayor mentioned the the Moon Tree, we had a really cute activity was behind the library and lots of kids there. And this was, the the Moon Tree, actually, there were seeds that were carried around the moon on the Artemis Rocket and brought back and they were planted, turned into seedlings and then Jackie Williams Courtrite from Alden Lane nurtured this this little tree and we planted it, it's behind the the library. And we are one of very few cities in the country that that it got one, because of our association with the Quest Science Center. We got one, yeah. Her name is Luna. So and I I think, let's see, who was it that, was it one of the the young ladies that came up with that name? Yes, Cora came up with Luna, so that was a lot of fun, so we planted that. And Luna is now behind the library and we hope that Luna will continue to thrive. On the the nineteenth, I was at Los Pecitas College for the ribbon cutting of their new viticulture technology facility, what a cool thing that is. Cool, it was cold out there, but had the opportunity to tour the facility and really considering Livermore is where the wine industry of California was founded. I think it's really cool that we have this this wonderful facility, the state of the art facility at Los Pecitas College, which has been recognized as one of the top community colleges in the in the country. Also, I was at the Citizens Police Academy graduation on the twentieth. Another group of citizens that went through the program and now are becoming our ambassadors in the community. And also many of them volunteer for our Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association where they provide a a steady source of volunteers for a lot of the programs that we have here in Livermore. And then finally, I attended a Celebration of Life on the twenty fourth. It was for a tireless advocate for Stanford Healthcare and for the arts throughout the region, it was Joyce Shapiro, a very dear friend of ours passed away and so I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in Joyce's honor and memory. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.